So special, sorry. I'd like to call the Water Pollution Control Authority Special Meeting of June 16th, 2025 to order. And we will start off with the public hearing. And this is for the 2526 sewer service fees and rates. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Sikala is absent. Commissioner Crisati.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Ludwig is absent. Commissioner Mangini is absent. Commissioner Nasuda.
Here.
Chair Nelson.
Here.
Vice Chair Pisner.
Here.
Commissioner Russo.
Here.
Commissioner Santinella.
Here.
And Commissioner Angier is absent. Seven commissioners are present or absent.
Thank you, Sheila. The Enfield Water Pollution Control Authority shall conduct a public hearing in the town council chambers at Town Hall 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut on Monday, June 16th, 2025, at 6:45 PM to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed sewer service fees and rates for fiscal year 2526. Information can be found in the town clerk's, in the office of the town clerk, or at www.nfield/ct.gov. Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk, dated June 5th, 2025. There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone will have the opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, et cetera, time. Please refrain from personalities. Who would like to come up and speak in regards to the water pollution control rates for 2526?
Mr. Chairman. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, just a point of order. Do we need to approve the previous minutes?
No.
Okay.
Public hearing first.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Young.
George Young, 8 Holly Lane, Enfield. In regards to the sewer service fees and rates, I'd like to say that the WPCA needs to be charged more by the town for the services provided. At presently, they are being charged $390,517 per year for services by the town manager, the legal department, and several other administrative areas, which was set way back when the WPC first set up, which was many years ago. In addition, they also pay the town for the IT services of $37,731 per year, which was also set way back then. As everyone knows, over the year, the cost of our new town manager, the town attorney's department, et cetera, and the IT department have substantially increased and should be billed to the WPC accordingly. The effect would be to increase the sewer charge per quarter and reduce our mill rate accordingly to save taxes. I'm sure you have already, I'm sure you have already set and agreed upon the rate, and it won't change tonight. But these costs should be recalculated by finance, and a better estimate needs to be made for the next time you look at these rates. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else? Anyone else for the second time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Should we close the public?
Second. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
We are.
We are closed. Thank you very much. Now, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes, the meeting minutes of June 6th, 2024.
26th.
June 26th. What did I say?
6th.
I'm sorry. June 26th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. And April 7th, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. And June 2nd, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention, and that's Councilman Santinella. Thank you, John. Okay, moving on. The discussion resolution, adopting the 2025-2026 sewer service fees and rates. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Hendrickson. Whereas, in accordance with Chapter 103, Section 7-255 of the Connecticut General Statute, the Enfield Water Pollution Control Authority held a public hearing on June 16th, 2025, at 6:45 PM and accepted comments on the proposed 2025-2026 sewer service fee schedule. Now therefore be it resolved, the Enfield Sewer Authority does hereby adopt the sewer service fee scheduled attached hereto as Attachment A, date prepared 6/12/2025, prepared by the Town Manager's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Comments?
John, explain the rates.
John, would you like to come up and explain the rate request briefly?
Sure. John Wilcox, Director of Finance. So last year, we, prior to FY25, we had been billing a flat fee plus a volume charge for sewer services to operate the water pollution control facility. Last year, for FY25, we changed that to all volume charges. So we've been analyzing the revenues received ongoing since then. I wanted to get the, as you've heard in prior meetings, I said I wanted to get through the May billing cycle to find out, and collection cycle to find out where we, where we were. We are ahead of last year's revenues as far as billing and as far as collections, however, not by as much as I thought. And so I would like to, I'm recommending an increase of 50 cents per 1,000 gallons for usage under 20,000 gallons, and an increase of 75 cents for usage over 75, over 25,000 gallons. And I'm going to fast forward on my little presentation here to show you the impact of those increases, okay? So in the left-hand group of columns, you have the FY25 rates, okay? So as you could see, highlighted in yellow, the usage for 12,000 gallons per quarter is $345.60 per year. With the new rates, that would increase to $369.60, an increase of $24. At 20,000 gallons, if your usage is at, it would be, go from $576 to 616, or a $40 increase. If your usage is about 25,000 gallons per quarter, then you get into the split rates because we bill a higher rate for over 20,000 gallons. So it would go from 791 to 846 gallons, or an increase, I'm sorry, $846, or an increase of $55. So that's, that would be the impact of these rates.
Thank you, John. Councilman Hendrickson.
So, John, you said we were ahead of collections so far this year, but not where you thought we would be. That's why the rate increases.
That's correct. We're still under our budgeted rates, but we're ahead of where we were actually for last year. We're behind on our, a little bit on our budget rates.
So this should put us clearly ahead even more?
Hopefully, yes. So we're going to do a couple other things as well. We're going to start, we haven't, since we've started this thing, water companies change meters, so we need to make sure everybody is still getting billed. Sometimes that happens and we don't get notified of the change. Things like that happen. So we're going to go through an analysis of finding that. We're also going to step up and start reviewing our collection process again. We had a pretty good process going previously, and we're going to make sure we're not, we're keeping up with, with collections on the, on the billing.
I think you also mentioned that our last meeting about the reduction meter?
Deduct.
Deduct meter. Were we able to put that in the bills going forward to make, just a reminder for people to get a deduct meter if they were using?
We can put that in the bills, in the tax bills when we mail those out. And we could probably put them in the, in the, the only problem is the postage cost on it and the cost of printing the bills themselves, printing the, and it's not, I don't think it's that sizable that we can't include that.
Well, they're already getting the bills now. Is it something we can put on the bill, or we cannot?
We can't really put it on the bill itself, no.
Okay.
It's not something that you could add on to it, but that would be, it's usually a separate piece of paper you put in there with it.
Okay.
We have about 700 people using deduct meters now.
Okay. Thank you, John.
I agree with Councilman Hendrickson. Maybe if we just put a notice in the first sewer bill right before summer starts, because that's when the water usage and pools and everything else go. Also, I had spoke, it might have been with you, Bob, about the potential of the town of Enfield having a deduct meter or two here in the building, that a resident could come in, put a deposit down on the deduct meter, take it for a one-time use. Say they're putting an in-ground swimming pool in. They could put this on their hose spigot and fill the pool, and they would have the reading, but this would be very temporary. They'd have like 48 hours to use it and return it, and it would be free. I mean, obviously, there'd be a deposit to make sure they returned the deduct meter, but I believe a lot of residents, you know, have one-time issues when it comes to filling a hot tub or above-ground pool or in-ground pool, and I think that's something that, as a municipality, I think we could handle doing that for the residents if you guys would support that. So if that's something we can look into, because I believe there's consensus up here.
Just to provide some additional information on that, we currently, one of the allowances that the council approved back in 2014 is a pool fill adjustment. They just need to give us some certification of the size of the pool and how much, you know, that they're going to be filling it, and, and we do provide an allowance for that. They can submit a requisition for that, and.
It's what?
So from my understanding of that, though, you don't get it back right away. You have to wait for your next water bill to come in. This would be like an easy, you get the deduct meter, give your deposit.
It would still have to wait until your next bill comes in, because if you're using it on a deduct meter like that, you still got to wait until the water bill comes in, against which your, that deduction is going to be taken.
So that's great news. I was unaware of that. Maybe that's something we include on the paper in, you know, June or whenever the sewer bill comes out, right before people do their pools, even replacing a liner. You know, it's something people don't think about, but.
Mayor, we can also blast that in the Town Manager's Office contemporaneous when it goes out.
Right, because it's easier to do it before than after they get their water bill. So, yeah, but it's just something that we really want to alert the residents to be proactive with this, and it could avoid, you know, an $800 water bill, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, well, it was, it's my understanding that these deduct meters, you need a licensed plumber to, to hook these up, I believe, to your faucet that is going to be leading to the pool getting filled up. So I don't think it's, you know, that easy just to say that you're going to, here's a meter, we can get it from the town hall, because I did inquire about that, and I was told that you would have to purchase a deduct meter, and they're very expensive, and you have to have a licensed plumber to come and hook it up. So I think we have to get a little more information in regard to that. I think it's easier than what we're thinking of.
The meter I was talking about screws right on your hose bib, so it's not a permanent. And you are allowed to do your own work on your own house. You still have to pull a permit for it. And you can buy a very good deduct meter on one of the big sites for $100. So I don't want to give out free advertising, but I know for a fact, if you do it yourself, you could have it done for under $120. And I don't know what a plumber would charge. Obviously, if you don't know what you're doing, but it has to have a building permit so they can inspect it.
Well, this, this is what I'm trying to get at. It's just not that easy. You know, you're going to have to get a permit and.
Well, not for the hose bib one. The hose bib screws on just like your hose, and then you hook the hose on the other side of it. Yeah, they have them, you can buy them at Home Depot, you can buy them on that site, you know, but this is something the town would control, so we know it's a good meter.
Okay, thank you.
All right. John? Oh, I thought you had. Anyone else?
Just wanted to go over the summer, June, July, and August, we're still doing that deduction.
For sprinklers.
Great. Well, we had talked about the adjustment, the summer adjustment, but we're keeping that in, just to make clear. I believe we talked about it at one time.
Correct.
The seven and a half.
That is correct, yes.
Seven and a half state, okay.
Any other questions? You all set, John? Bob, you're good? Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Crisati.
Four.
Commissioner Hendrickson.
Four.
Commissioner Nasuda.
Four.
Chair Nelson.
Four.
Vice Chair Pisner.
Four.
Commissioner Russo.
Four.
Commissioner Santinella.
Four.
Seven members in favor, none against.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of adjourned?
All in favor.
We are now adjourned. Okay, I'd like to call the regular council meeting of June 16th, 2025 to order. And can we all rise for a prayer by Councilman Santinella?
Tonight, I want to take a moment of reflection and prayer for the Enfield High School class of 2025. We pause tonight to celebrate all that you've accomplished and all that lies ahead. These past 12 years have shaped you, not only through what you've learned, but through the friendships you've built, the challenges you've overcome, and the strengths and passions you've discovered within yourself. As you step into this next chapter, may you carry with you a spirit of hope and optimism. May you approach the future with open hearts, curious minds, with empathy, compassion, and the courage to take risks, live boldly, and dream big. No matter where life takes you, across the country or around the world, always remember this, Enfield will always be your home. This community is proud of you. You are part of something lasting, something rooted in shared memories, a rich history, strong values, and support for one another. This community believes in you. We celebrate you. We will be here cheering you on every step of the way, and we look forward to seeing all the ways that you'll grow and lead and give back to the world. Congratulations to the class of 2025. May God bless you as you begin your journey. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And can we have roll call, please?
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
Councilor Angier is absent. Councilor Sikala is absent. Councilor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig is absent. Councilor Mangini is absent. Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
And Councilor Russo.
Here.
Seven members are present, none are absent. I mean, four absent, sorry.
Thank you. In the event of a fire, please exit the rear of the council chambers, go down the stairs in a safe distance away from the building, or you can go out the side doors here, down one flight of stairs, and out the rear doors, also a safe distance away from the building. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 2nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. And the regular meeting of June 2nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
So, to the, to the mayor, to the town clerk, I was here for part of the meeting. What is the protocol? Do I abstain? Can I, for this, for the June 2nd?
Did you watch it on TV?
I didn't watch the rest of it. I had to leave.
You?
I had to leave. So did other people.
No, when you went home, did you watch it after you left? The next day, week? John, you're supposed to say yes.
I watched it six times after. Just, I just want to know, should I abstain here?
I would.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. All in favor? Opposed? And John Santinella's abstaining because he didn't watch it on TV. Thank you. Next, tonight, we have special guests from the Educational Resources for Children, and they are going to discuss their summer program. Come on up, please. And myself and Councilman Pisner had the honor of attending their grand opening.
Their celebration of 31 years.
Their celebration of 31 years at their newer location, and it's eye-opening, the programs that they offer to the youth of our community. And I thought, what a better way to get the word out is to have them come as special guests and hear it from them themselves. So welcome this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation to speak on behalf of ERFC. We are honored to be here today. I know that most of you have heard about ERFC or have experienced it through your children or your neighbor, but just to give you a little bit of the history. Oh, I apologize. I am Tracy Joseph. I am the Board of Directors' President for 2025, and I am with the center administrators, Taylor Goslin and Jordan Chase. Apologize again. Just to give you a little bit of history about ERFC, we are a private, nonprofit organization founded in 1994, dedicated to providing high-quality, accessible, academic-based programming for children and families in Enfield and surrounding towns. Our team is passionate, passionately committed to fostering academic success, personal growth, and enrichment opportunities through diverse range of educational, recreational, and support programs tailored to meet unique needs of each child. Our mission is committed to providing high-quality, accessible, which I just read, but it helps every child thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Through innovative learning experiences and strong partnerships, we empower every child to succeed in school and beyond. Our vision is a future where every child has access to quality education, enriching experiences, and the support needed to thrive regardless of background and circumstance. I'm going to have the center administrators speak to you a little bit more about the programming that we offer, and then we'll dive straight into the summer escape.
So not only do we offer seven weeks of summer care, we also are year-round. We have ERFC Edge, which is our before and after-school program. During that time, it's provided to give academic support to all the children in the town, obviously, with enrichment activities and recreational games. Right now, we have about 200 kids enrolled. We are hoping to expand greatly, and that was for our 2024-2025 school year. We also have a program at the middle school, which is our ERFC Teen Edge. Not every middle school gets after-school activities besides just clubs and along the lines of that, so we basically tailored a program that was just for the middle school students to get them more engaged. They spend time with friends in a productive setting, explore new skills and interests, and receive academic support, obviously, and be able to grow with friends. It also gives them a safe space to hang out with friends after school. That continue, that continues us right into Flex, ERFC Flex. We do hold time during our vacation days, so April vacation, December vacation. We do have that week where we are open for all working parents. We're open as early as 7:00, and then we close at 5:00.
So Taylor's going to speak more about ERFC Summer Escape.
So our Summer Escape program, it starts in two weeks. It starts on June 30th, and this program is a safe, exciting, and memorable day camp experience for students entering grades K through 8, so a big widespread of grades. We're Monday through Friday, and our camp hours are 8:00 AM through 3:00 PM. And then we do offer an extended day that goes till 6:00 PM, and we're also open in the morning from 7:00 to 8:00 for those parents that need to get to work. So we offer a ton through this program, and basically, and it's all included. So we offer a theater program where kids get to do skits, build confidence, work team building, things like that. And every week, at the end of the week, we host a family showcase to showcase what they've been learning in that program. During our showcase, we also look at the other things that they've been working on. So we have a STEM program, we have sports, we have a life skills program, which really touches upon those areas that parents may not be getting to or kids may be lacking in, such as shoe tying, how to properly brush teeth, little things like that that just work for those younger children. Then we also have arts and crafts, and then we have a literacy program that will help to make sure that students are not regressing during the summer and they're able to stay on track with their literacy. So we work on all of those things, and then we also have a bunch of other things that we're working towards this summer. So we have a basketball clinic, which we're doing for the first time, and in that basketball clinic, kids are able, again, it's free of charge for our, for our campers, it's all included in our program, and we have a semi-professional basketball player coming in to teach these kids skills that they may not have gotten somewhere else. And then we're also going to talk about our field trips, because we have some awesome field trips this summer as well. We are going to Lake Congamon three times, we are going to the Springfield Museums, we're going to Shaker Bowl, we're going to the New England Air Museum, Forest Park Zoo, and then we're wrapping it all up with Sunny's Place this year. So now I'm going to pass it over to Tracy, who's going to go over some more special programming that we have.
So just to give you an idea, because all of that, both of them just read, can actually be read on our website, right? So the reason why we're here is that we were awarded a grant through open choice that allowed us to enrich our programming, allowing us to go back to the foundation of things. We're bringing back the spelling bee to work on literacy, but also articulating and public speaking for our children. We are actually holding a science fair that judges, our community partners will be judges for that science fair. We're bringing back parent engagement within that as well. We are also, the grant also covers family engagements for five weeks of the seven-week program of summer camp. We are also bringing in Chief Master Sergeant Ford from DC to speak about heroes, but also social, social and emotional learning, and what he did and how did he get through and navigate life using his social, emotional skills and leadership. We are also putting back money into the local community. This year is a little unique due to the budget cuts in CRT. We actually were able to get the food covered. So we are putting back about $45,000 into the local economy by supporting Lulu's, Anthony's, Ben, Benson Bagels, Cone of Ice, Sunday's Truck, Anthony's, and Dunkin' Donuts. And the kids are going to have fresh food made every single morning, every single lunchtime, and then, of course, with family engagement, it also covers the food as well. Everything ends with the block party, where the kids will get, will become acknowledged, excuse me, once we hit the finalist round for a spelling bee and a science fair as well. And that is our annual backpack drive, which we do every year, but it's a little bit of a tweak this year where we're able to go all out for the kids. We have food trucks coming, we have the car seat checks, we have different community partners coming in and making it a whole community event. You know, nonprofits are the heart of the community, and the reason why we're able to do what we do is because of the residents in Enfield. I mean, from the sewing machine. I mean, from the sewing machines and bringing back those life skills, which we'll be teaching our kids this year, to just a donation from Mark Twain for the gardening aspect, where we'll be growing fresh produce to give back to our seniors. We're going to have the kids engaged, not distracted and not watching TV or on their tablets. They're going to go back to learning life skills and not losing that academic basis that so many lose during the summertime. And that's the importance of ERFC.
Wow. I can say, I can tell you all work with children who have those loud voices that get people's attention, and me, I'm kind of getting hard of hearing, and it was so great to hear and to see your expression on your face, and that's why I asked you here. Because the other week when we were there, I see it. I see it in your eyes and in your heart. So, I have a few questions, and they're not so much questions, but it's just information that I want you to get out.
Okay.
So, is this program a first-come, first-served basis?
I would say, as far as what we have, yes. Because we have to stay within ratio according to OEC. And so, if we have an influx, and this is why we have our team meetings, if we have an influx, then we look at whether or not we need to hire. Most of our staff is 95% Enfield residents. Our retention is 91.7%, and most of our team is five years plus. There's only about maybe 5%, that's two years.
Okay, so, the goal would be sign up sooner than later?
Correct.
All right. Can a resident enroll their children in your camp program only?
Yes.
So, they don't have to be a full-year-round student of yours? They could just sign up for the summer programs?
Correct. We have different licenses for each program, and each site has their own license.
Okay. Where would a resident go right now to sign up for the program to find out, or find out more about the program?
ERFCinc.org. I'm not quite sure if you were able to tune into the local public access channel for Cox. We were on there. We did ABCs of ERFC, where we spoke about summer escape and how you can register, and how you can volunteer or donate. What you give to us goes directly to our kids. Also, you can call in. I'm always available. You know, if you have my phone number, you text me. I'm a workaholic, so, you know. Feel free to ask me questions. I believe in transparency and integrity. So, if there's something that we need to be doing better, if you let us know, we can sit down and have a conversation. Maybe there's a part of information you don't know that you need to know.
So, a parent at home could enroll their children into this summer camp program and also volunteer for that same program?
Yes.
And, you know, be with other children along with their own, and enjoy everything, because I heard all the food you talked about, and I'm signing up, that's why I'm asking. There's no age limit, is there?
No, you just have to go through a background check.
Serious question, is there a maximum age limit for the children that can enroll?
It's K to 8.
K to 8?
Yes.
K to 8, okay, beautiful. And then, my last question, or financial assistance. People are struggling. So, is there some sort of financial assistance for families in town that may not have the means to pay for this camp or the programming?
So, yes. In short, we have partnered with Care for Kids, and Care for Kids goes by the parent's income. They have lessened the amount that they count towards the fee that they will help the parents with, but they will approve the parent, they will let us know, we will receive a certificate, and then we take a portion off of their tuition. Everything that I mentioned today does not increase the tuition at all. Our tuition stays the same. The grant just covers the enhancement. So, the field trips, the food, the Spelling Bee's, the parties, the science fair, all of that is what the grant covers. So, the parent only has to look at that one tuition fee per week, and if they qualify for Care for Kids, then Care for Kids kicks in and assists them with that as well. We do go after grants that fill slots. Not this year in particular, but there is an opportunity, if a grant is awarded, where we can have a slot filled by that grant, and that goes towards the tuition per week. Another way, too, which we had happen, is if a community member or a donor would like to donate a week towards a particular child, then they are able to sign up, even if it's just a week, because each week is our session.
Wow, that's incredible. And if I volunteer for the summer, I get all that food?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, I hope you all see the value in this program, because I did. When I was there last weekend, it was eye-opening, and I am so glad you came in, and I hope, and I'm sure the people see what I saw. So, anyone else? Deputy Mayor Pisner?
So, Tracy and I had the pleasure of having lunch together, and I just want to give a shout-out to our housing authority, because they did supply you with the land at Mark Twain.
Yes.
Tracy had mentioned to me that she wanted to do garden, and I was trying to think of places in town that we could do that. And I said, wait a minute, there was a gentleman who used to live at Mark Twain, who had a garden. So, I made a phone call, and we got a garden. And the Mark Twain residents are beside themselves happy.
Yes.
About, because it's a win-win.
It's a win.
They're going to be out there helping you with the kids and hopefully getting produce. She also had me at life skills. She had me at life skills. She goes, I want to teach kids life skills, like how to sew. I'm like, oh, my God, that's like amazing. But the biggest thing is you're putting money back in. You got a grant for money. You didn't sit back and wait for the food shelf to give you money, or you went out and you took that money, and now you're putting it back into local restaurants. That's a win-win. And so, I just love what you're doing. I want to thank all of you for coming, and I'm hoping that the kids get to take advantage of a great summer with you.
Well, 140 is enrolled, and it's going to continue to grow, and I'm excited. You know, this is the heart of community, this is the heart of a nonprofit, it's for the benefit of the community. And sometimes, we have to look around us and know when our residents are tapped out and go through, you know, seek other resources, and that's exactly what I have done. And I'm happy to partner with Open Choice, to provide that grant, and more to come. I'm going after grants. Our kids need it, they need that opportunity, they need the representation, and they need that knowledge. If you don't use it, you lose it, and our kids are suffering for the lack of, due to the lack of.
Thank you. All set, Marie? Councilman Santinello?
Just one question. So, who works at your camps? Are they high school kids, college kids? Like, what is the profile? Do you have camp counselors? Are they local kids?
So, they are local. I would say that 95% of our employees are Enfield residents, and I will also say that we have a mixture. So, we have CITs, which are counselors in training, which we teach kids leadership and social skills along with communication skills. What we will also do is accept college kids. So, there are several college kids that only works during the summer, and they might fill in on vacations or so much. But that's where it goes to the communication. Let us know your availability, we see where we can fit you in. But most of our employees are teachers in Enfield Public Schools. And CITs, you know, Jordan's been with us for almost 10 years. So, she went from 16 to now she has, you know, her own family, and this is the heart of a community. We're growing, she's learning new skills as she steps into her official role in the office.
So, young people who might be looking for a summer job can reach out as well to you as an opportunity to work in this great program?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for all that you do. Your program's great, and, you know, I've helped hand out backpacks a number of times. I've been to some of your camps. I think the work that you do in the community is fantastic.
Thank you.
Keep doing a good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Shops at Elm Street Square LLC and Frank Triano. Well, welcome, everyone. This is a little different than the way we normally do things, but this is TIF. This is an application for TIF money. And for transparency, we figured this is the best way to get started, to let people try to understand what TIF is about, because a lot of people have questions about it. And so, you're the first one. So, basically, explain to us what your thoughts are, what the project is, and what you need the money for.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's Frank Triano. I am the member and the manager of the Shops at Elm Street Square. This is actually a site that's actually on Elm Street at Route 220. Basically, it's right across the street from Town Fair Tire to the Volkswagen dealership. It includes the intersection for Paloma and Route 220. It's a commercial development, it's already been approved, it's fully approved between wetlands, planning and zoning, and we also have our OESTA permit, which is part of why we're actually in the foreview. The opportunity of actually bringing forward a application for a TIF funding for reimbursement is actually focused on our property, is a little different than most of the others. And that opportunity that you said to bring forward this TIF, it's probably good to explain, because we're probably going to be a little different than most that are going to apply for the TIF application program itself. I did want to start off by actually introducing Mike Andriana, that's to my right. Mike Andriana is an attorney that actually is with Pullman &amp; Comley out of Hartford and of Waterbury. He is also, I would say, probably the preeminent expert in TIF, since he was actually probably the drafter of the TIF regulation for the state of Connecticut. And I just wanted to bring it over to Mike, and we'll start off from there.
Beautiful. Welcome.
Thank you. As Frank said, Mike Andriana, I'm a partner at Pullman &amp; Comley. I work out of the Hartford office. Just real quick, because I know we have a limit here, TIF generally is just taking incremental real property taxes from new development and using those taxes to, in some ways, support, in this case, public improvements related to the project. They can also support the project, and there's usually, the way TIF works is you take the incremental taxes, and there's some sharing between the town, where that money goes to the general fund, and a portion of the incremental taxes go to the project. What you have in front of you now is an application, and it's a little unique in the sense that even though the town's TIF policy has a 10-year term for credit enhancement agreements, what we're here in front of you for is asking for, I guess, two parts. Approval of the credit enhancement agreement, but also a waiver of the 10-year term and extending that to 20 years. There's a number of reasons that we feel justify that increase. One is that these TIF dollars for the project are going strictly to public improvements. They're going to this intersection that's right outside of the project. It's on a state road. It's a project that I think the state has been very clear that they have presently no intention to make any improvements there. There are public improvements that are necessary for the project. It requires a donation of land from Frank for the project to build another lane. It's, you know, generally, we're talking improvements, public improvements in the nature of roughly 2.3, 2.4 million. So, what we're asking for is that these TIF dollars go to basically reimburse the developer for the cost of those public improvements. We've agreed to a cap on the public improvements, that no more than 2.4 million of the TIF dollars would go back for reimbursement, regardless of what the final cost is. We have estimates that are now a year old that put it at right around 2.4 million. We worked with the town's finance director that did projections of the incremental tax revenues, and based on the sharing arrangement, which is 50% of the incremental taxes go back to the town, and 50% would be used for the project. The finance director is projecting that it is doubtful that even over 20 years, we'd get to the 2.4 million. We'd get close, I think the projection is like just over 2.3. Over 10 years, we're looking at like 1.1 million. Another reason why we're asking for this 20-year term is that unlike some of the other projects in town, for this project, a tax abatement agreement just doesn't make sense. Because it's a retail project, all of the tenants at this project will be entering into triple-net leases, where they will be paying the property taxes for their portion of the property. As a result, a tax abatement agreement is just going to give a discount to the tenants. None of that would come back to the property owner that would reimburse the property owner for the costs that that property owner has shelled out for the public improvements. The credit enhancement agreement related to TIF, the way that works is the town collects all the property taxes, and then the agreement says that that 50% portion of the increment goes back to the property owner. So, that's why the credit enhancement agreement is a much better fit for this project. You know, the other things are that, and I'll tell you this, I've worked with a bunch of towns, a bunch of developers. I've rarely seen a project that is so publicly oriented towards the improvements that they're looking for in reimbursement. I think the trend I typically see is some of the money going back for private development. So, I think this is unique. It fits what the town's TIF plan covers, it fits what the town's kind of credit enhancement agreement covers. You know, and it's also something that we've had multiple meetings with the TIF Advisory Committee on, have gone through the process with them, had worked with the finance director and the economic development director at these TIF Advisory Committee meetings, and ultimately concluded that this kind of 20-year credit enhancement agreement for this project is unique enough to merit a waiver from the council to allow it to go to 20 years rather than the 10-year term.
So, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the question about TIF and the understanding TIF, I think, is something that the average person probably doesn't understand very well. Basically, it's a portion of the taxes that are revenue increased by the development that actually is completed on that individual spot, that individual parcel. Half of it goes towards reimbursement, the other half comes to the town. So, unlike many things, these programs are very, very helpful development for the opportunity that it doesn't cost the taxpayer anything, nothing. It never will, it never does. In ours, we're a little bit more unique, and I, my hat's off to Councilor Pisner, that when we were actually in the meetings for the TIF application process, we went through the committees, and she mentioned before about having a cap. The cap is very helpful, which we included into our package, and also the fact that we want to make sure it's very clear that this is public improvement. Unlike every application that'll probably go forward to the TIF committee in the future, we are 100% putting all of the funds to the improvement of an intersection that should have been completed by the state of Connecticut 10 or 15 years ago. We all live here, and the fact that this improvement was never completed by the state is something that's been a bottleneck for all of us that drive through there. I drive through that intersection every day, and it's a bottleneck. Everybody jumps over to the right lane going west. The improvements that we're looking for in our OESTA permit that we already have approved provides us with the added land that we're giving for no cost, brings another lane that would now blend the intersection back from all the way to nearly the college, nearly to Edson Tuck. It'll definitely handle and help the next intersection, which is a single lane, a single road, and it's going to bring that focus now to the full intersection, which is now going to provide a left-turn lane east and westbound by adding that center lane to have a pass-through lane now. So, nobody has to jump in and cut everybody off on both ways. Now, this will happen on both sides, both ways, both angles, because we're donating the land all the way through. The fact of the amount of work that has to be done in the OESTA permit, it's rather expensive, and there's no way around that, because we're building it to state standards. Our opportunity is to get a better intersection, but really, it's a benefit in friction for everybody. It's not just for us. The public improvement is actually going to be something where we might get 500 people a day. a day when the project's completed, but right now, it's measured at 30,000 cars a day. 30,000 people go by it every day and have that public improvement. We're bypassing what we think is a benefit to our project, like many people have the right to actually pursue for a public improvement. We're actually get a benefit that goes to our property. Our property is actually listed by address in the TIF application process right now. In the TIF program for the town of Enfield, our address is actually included. We're not going to take any of that funding for our property, zero. Not only we not going to take any of the funding, we capped it, as Ms. Prisner actually was mentioning before, and I appreciate her support with that because that was very helpful, because I think it actually helps clarity to the average person looking for a TIF. And why are you giving money to a property owner? Why are you doing something that maybe the town or the state should be doing? We're fortunate that this project is large enough to absorb on a 20-year basis this entire improvement. We also capped that if it doesn't cover it, we will cover the rest. We will absorb anything above and beyond that money. Anything below that money, we've also put in a restriction that if we finish this project, then it actually happens over 15 years, and we receive enough money to reimburse us for that improvement, that public improvement, we stop our benefit. Unlike any other TIF application, as Michael said, it probably ever had, or maybe even ever will, because it's a very unique thing. And that's why I said every TIF application is probably a little bit different, but I would challenge anybody going forward in the future to think that they would have a limit on the high and a limit on the low for the benefit of actually having every dollar go into the intersection and a public improvement, and nothing go into the project itself. And that's why we wanted to bring it forward to you, and we appreciate the opportunity to explain all this because I think this is invaluable, I think, to the Enfield residents to understand. Nothing is going to come out of anybody's pocket except potentially ours. And that's probably the easiest way to probably explain it to the average person.
Right. Well, thank you. And so I'm going to try to simplify this.
Please.
Currently, right now, it's a vacant lot. And I guess the taxes are maybe $4,000 a year on it, ballpark. What... I'm not asking. So the taxes are nothing because it's vacant land.
Actually, the taxes right now, because we changed it to business, are about $90,000 a year.
On that lot?
Correct, sir.
Okay. So that's a lot. But the new taxes, when the project is done with no abatements, no TIF money, what are you projecting the tax to be on that plaza?
Do you have that...
And these are rough numbers.
Yeah, no, the Director of Finance actually made his projection actually with all those numbers because he actually went out as an assessment, and I think that's in your packet. I don't have that as a presentation that we can do, but I believe it's in your packet.
I don't have a packet. And I asked because I wanted to see... Well, I'll get into that later. But so what I'm trying to show is... So I'm just going to use numbers. So currently, you're paying $90,000 on the land.
But first of all, I apologize because we have it in the packet. We thought from when Aaron was actually finishing this, he was forwarding over that as part of the packet.
He was supposed to.
And also, the OSTA draft or the OSTA format of what we asked for the improvement, it gave the scale of what we were actually looking for the improvements as well. It was also supposed to be part of your package.
All right. So what is the projected taxes on the plaza done?
So just correction. Current taxes, the current assessed value is 1.7 million. Taxes are roughly 56,000.
Okay.
Per the finance director, the projection is, once the project is done, taxes will be roughly 250,000.
Okay.
So there's an... The increment is roughly 196,000, and the idea would be that that would be split 50/50.
Right. So that's what I'm getting at. So the TIF only affects the increase in the taxes after the improvement. It does not touch the original tax on the property. So your original 56,000 a year stays the same. Taxpayers get the benefit of it.
Correct.
And then half of the additional, the 194,000, half continues to go to the town of Enfield, and the other half gets put in the TIF district for public improvements and certain things along those lines for the benefit. Now, one thing that I have noticed with dealing with the mall that has been going on for almost two years now is the amount of people that are upset with the traffic on Elm Street and Hazard Avenue. And you are correct, that is a choke point bad. So the reason I've been adamant about seeing your OSTA permit and what they are demanding you do is because I happen to know there is currently a light to that lot at that intersection. So I want to see that they are demanding this be done. One, the state says you're not building unless you do it. And two, it helps justify the public improvement to the people. And three, now they're seeing the tax benefit from day one of doing this project. Other than tax abatements, as you had said earlier, it may take 10 years to see any recoup. In this particular project, we would start to see an increase in taxes on year one. So and, you know, anything we can do to grow the grand list and help offset a potential tax increase, we have to look at. We have to entertain.
I appreciate that. And this was always in the plan of development for the town of Enfield since probably 30 years ago. It just never came to fruition. We also donated six acres to the back, actually to the public improvement, but it was actually the opposite way. It was actually for the neighborhood. So this used to be a 16-acre parcel, and now it's just around 10. But, you know, your points are very well made, and I think that's the clarity that I think most people have to understand, and ours might be a little bit unique in the sense of actually the improvement of the money. No matter what, nothing is taken from the town. It's only added. And whatever we can do to enhance it, that's the estimate that actually the director of finance completed. And I think you did a very good job, and our goal is to actually start this as soon as possible because we not only want the intersection done right away, we want to be able to commit to our tenants right away. So we also included a date of start. We have to complete it or have to start the application process by next summer. So this is not going to be something that lingers on, and, you know, it's very difficult because even the mall, as you mentioned, there's no permits. They haven't gotten any approvals yet. They haven't gone to OSTA yet. We're shovel-ready. We'd like to have this completed ahead of time. And we always think, and our civil engineer also mentioned, there's probably no doubt that this intersection is assumed to be completed for the mall application when it goes through because that's going to change a lot of the activities for our town. And our town is probably going to have a wonderful development, but we don't make it worse. And right now, it does have amazing choke point, and I'm surprised that it's as unfocused from the state of Connecticut. I'm very disappointed because we're bypassing a benefit to our own development, which we're not going to see. But we think it's so important to get the development started that we're willing to put all of our opportunity or all of our benefit to put it into the intersection itself. So we're willing to put down everything we said, and we have no problem actually defining that information because that clarity is something we're looking for. The TIF committees were wonderful. We worked through issues. We talked through why certain things were happening a certain way, and as Mike mentioned of why we actually think that some of the TIF application waivers or the allowances that provide the council need to be done for something like this because this is very unique. But having Mike on board has been a godsend for the sense of understanding what the state would allow because we want to make sure it's a viable opportunity to go forward as well. So we feel pretty comfortable that we can get that information for you, and I have no worry about showing the extent of what the OSTA application is. I'm sorry you don't have that concept. We actually had a...
It's not your fault.
We had a very, very nice, detailed, colored rendering that our civil engineering firm showed, and the extension of this project, you know, of the responsibility that we have for the OSTA permit is basically 1,000 feet. This is not just the intersection. We're actually affecting all the way to Freshwater and nearly back to the college. And it's going to help the people that are on the previous street to get out, which they already get blocked in, and they can't really leave their own street themselves. And we're going to improve all the crossings, and we're going to have new sidewalks, and we're going to go cross with pedestrian crossing. Not only that, but incorporated with the intersection, but actually having the entire lane added was where OSTA actually stepped up and really wanted to have it because we already have an approval for two entrances for our property, for our development. We have one on the intersection, another one on the west side. But all of that is incorporated in this attitude because that needs to be done. This whole work needs to be coordinated with Elm Street, and that has to be done for all of us because if you can't get your lights all coordinated all the way down, we're all going to get bottlenecked, as you said, and it's going to be worse. We want to try to make it better, and I think this is a huge improvement for public, and I think it'll help the project, and I think it'll help the town as well. I think it's just a wonderful improvement that we would like to do forward. We're actually happy that the project is large enough to absorb this type of an improvement. Otherwise, I think that we'd all be banging our door on the state, which I have to thank, you know, Representative Santinella, that he already did look into the state, and he mentioned that at one of our meetings for the TIF application. And the state doesn't have this on its radar, and that's a problem. And we still want to keep going forward, but I think we need to move forward. But the state already has it on their website that there's nothing for five years for this intersection. They only focus out so many years, but our civil engineering firm did reach out to find out if there's anything on their focus, and there is zero. So we've already tried to do everything we can because we'd rather not have it. We'd rather have the state do it, and they're not doing anything with it.
Right. Well, I... One of my... And I'll be honest, one of my biggest concerns was the 20 years. I'm dead set against 20 years. And I think your explanation cleared up a lot of why. Because in 10 years, you could never... Because the tax isn't that much the increase, it would never equal that. So I understand now why you're asking for 20 years. I'm not saying I agree to the 20 years, but I have a clear picture now.
I hope that we can convince you to do the 20. But the reason... The reasoning why is basically because even the Director of Finance said it's doubtful. It's actually in the program that he actually put a summary for. It's doubtful we will even achieve all that even over 20.
Right.
Because there's only so much we can draw. All the other properties around us are developed, and there's only so much, I guess, you can squeeze out of one lemon. But when it comes down to it, the opportunity of getting it done is probably a benefit. That's why we even put in the cap. If it goes over, you know, we understand. And I understand also, being a local developer, there's a little bit of, you know, concern of is there favoritism, and there's not. This is something we wanted to clarify, that we do a lot of work in Enfield, and we love to be here. We're residents of Enfield, and our family has been here for three generations, as very well-known, but at the same time, we're trying to do things right. We want to get this project started. That's why we also put in that start date that we want to get going as well. So even if we don't have the development going, we wanted to get the improvements of the road completed, and we're fine to put the road ahead of the improvements. So that was one thing there. But the clarification, as you asked, we can definitely do that better and have it be more clear for presentation or anybody asking a question so you can explain it more... Less legalese than either myself or Michael, but also from layman's terms to know that we're probably not going to recoup our money even after the 20, but certainly the 10 isn't sufficient.
Well, Deputy Mayor Prisner has invited me to the TIF meetings to sit in and listen on this, and I just thought it was better to do it here because if I have the questions, there's a lot of people out watching right now that have questions. And you are right, people do say favoritism and stuff like that. They bring up other issues. Regardless, with or without the development, there is a problem on Elm Street and Hazard Avenue. We all know it. Something's got to get done. So either the state does it, which they've said no, and John, if you'd like, I'll give the governor a call if you want, and I'll ask him. All right. But something's got to get done. So this is a step in the right direction, and I thought this was the perfect example to show the public improvement without costing the taxpayers one cent. They're actually going to make money by allowing something like this. So the question, I think, would be 10 to 20 years and explain why. So I appreciate you guys coming in. John, did you have your hand up?
Just one... Just one thing. So there is that parcel of land, I think it's six acres, that you mentioned that's in the back that you've kind of given off as open space, correct? So this comes up, and you and I have talked about it, and so since you're here, I'm going to just bring it up again. The neighborhood behind there, religiously, in the end of the summer, tumbleweeds come through the neighborhood. What can you do to mitigate that because it's really frustrating for those folks? I'm just wondering, in this development process, is there any way to mitigate that?
When we got the approval from planning and zoning, it's a great question. And by the way, what it's called is purple grass. We've been so on this thing, it's been frustrating. It grows extremely fast, and when it tumbles, as you said, it's very straw-like, so it picks up each other's little grass. Next thing you know, you've got this big pile that actually just kind of rolls right into the street. It was well there before we got there. It certainly isn't something that was there, and I think before this, it was a horse farm, it was Button Farm, and there was horses back there. So they probably just let it go fallow, and that was an issue. We're responsible to cut it three times per the zoning rights. So we went out there two years ago, cut it three times. Made it worse because it was more susceptible to grow. It's a timing issue. So we have a landscape architect that's actually with Hesketh and Associates. So I asked him, because I don't want the concern, and I wouldn't like that in my backyard as well. We asked him to visit the site on our behalf to find out when we should cut it because there's a timeline that goes before germination of the plant that would actually prohibit it from expanding as opposed to rapidly expanding the growth. So we're actually on that itself, but it's called purple grass.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to look it up, that's what it is, and that's the issue.
Listen, I've been in the neighborhood. They appreciate being able to look at some open space.
Yep.
But those, the purple grass, I've seen, you know, the bales of it flying down the street. So I think they will appreciate, you know, the effort that you're making to mitigate that. So thank you.
And we know most of the neighbors there now. I mean, for the negotiation and the mitigation we did when we got the approval originally because that site was replied many times, it was rejected, where the only approval that was ever given on that site, and it was the right thing to do. We have no problem maintaining it differently. It's just when we had it, everybody wanted it not to go fallow and have trees go. They want a field. The purple grass loves fields. So we can't get rid of it. It's not an invasive species. It's just one of those things that we have to maintain. So we're willing to go out more often. It's just we're trying to figure it out with the professionals.
So on that note, and you might have said this, I think I missed it. Who did you donate the six acres to?
You know what? I think technically it's to the town of Enfield, or it's to our LLC. I'll find that out. I don't remember. Paul, you were part of that team, remember?
We didn't donate it. Normally, you guys don't want more land.
Well, right, because what I'm getting at is if you donated it to us, now it's our problem, and I'd rather not have it be our problem.
No, no, I will clarify. Thank you. Paul was actually part of the development team when we got the approval. It didn't go back because you're right, the town doesn't want any more land to maintain it. It's our responsibility, so we donated the right of the land to be non-used in the future regardless.
Right.
The town has the right to change that if they need to or want to.
So it's open space.
It's open space.
That's it.
It's not donated. It's donated to the open space. Technically, it's ours, and we're still responsible, and we have maintaining responsibilities, but it is not there. But we call it donating because we can't use it for anything, and nor do we want to do that.
Right. All right. So now we know who to call, John. All right. Anyone else? Go ahead, Bob.
I'm just going to make a comment. Frank and your team, thanks. Thanks for coming in front of us. We've talked several times about your project, and, you know, once again, when we look at public improvement, especially on Elm Street, and the addition of lanes on both sides to make that a lot safer and for your project to move forward, thanks for clarifying the difference between first, the tax abatement as compared to your credit enhancement and for the additional 10 years, from 10 to 20. Definitely understand that, and I think the public definitely understands that. So, you know, thank you for all this information, your attorney here and your team. Thanks.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And if there's any other questions, you know, after the meeting, obviously, it's something we certainly can provide, and if the town wants to reach out on behalf of us, I'm sure we can reach out with the town of Enfield or find out anything else that's off after this meeting that might come up, or when you have a constituent that actually asks a question, we can certainly help with that as well.
Right. I would just... Steve, if you could have those packets delivered to the council because we were told we'd have them tonight, and I don't see Aaron or Christie here, so it would have made more sense if we had them for this discussion. Is everybody good? Okay. So again, this is kind of unconventional, but I think this is for transparency. It's for everybody's benefit. Please don't take it as a positive or a negative. This is something so we're all on the same page with the residents of Enfield. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and you guys have a great night.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we are going to move on to public communications. Any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair, and shall state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had a chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so, and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, item seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds, eight minutes. During public communication, item 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 p.m., each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communication shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not to an individual employee. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct and shall refrain from personalities and improper language. George Young.
George Young, 8 Holly Lane, Enfield, Connecticut. I was going to say good luck to Mr. Bronson, but unless he's watching on TV for the remainder of his good life, enjoy it. A week ago, I participated in a golf tournament for the Enfield Eagles high school football team. It appeared to be a successful fundraising event at Cedar Knob Country Club, which a lot of people were there, and it was a real nice event. In addition, the town concerts on Tuesday night seemed to be successful, with many people attending a non-taxpayer-sponsored event, which is what I really like. Last month, I asked a number of questions, but it seems like we never get answers. Let's see if we can re-ask some of those questions tonight. How many people were approved for the July 1, 2025 Senior Volunteer Tax Credit for hours volunteered in the calendar year '24? The budget was $100,000 based on 250 applicants. I had suggested that 200 people would probably be, would probably apply, and the budget should have been about $80,000. I have done some other checking on my own, so now I'd like to, John, or someone to confirm that no more than 150 applicants would be applying, and the cost to the town would be about $60,000 and leave about $40,000 left over, if that's correct. The council rejected the following year's request to approve this program because it didn't, didn't want to give the seniors money because there was no income limitations. If that is true, then the council should have insisted that the, that there be an income limitation and set the amount and approve the program. Maybe it's time to freeze the taxes on seniors after a certain age in residency. In May, it was observed that there was cutting being done on a newly paved section of Ridge Road and Holly Lane. At the time, we were not sure why, but thought it was part of the Roads 2021 project to redo Holly Lane and part of Ridge Road. We subsequently found out it was to replace the water main by the Connecticut Water Company. I'm glad it is being done on Holly Lane before the town starts the pavement project, but it's unfortunate that the lower portion of Ridge Road that was resurfaced has now been cut up again. Sounds like the town and the water company are not coordinating their projects. My question from last month was that if the town has a timetable for when the pavement project for Holly Lane was going to be done, then you should share it with us residents so we have a chance to plan our own lives. Please do not refer us to the town manager's par report because it is not there, and the DPW's project tracker has not been updated since February 3, 2025, indicating that design work is in process and the project is 15% done. We are also aware that the contract has been awarded, I believe. In regarding, in regard to current events, when will we see the completed 2024 town financial report? In regards to the discussion tonight regarding some of the resolutions, I have some comments. Agenda item 13A1, to transfer $90,000 for the moving expenses of the new town manager who assumes his position on July 1, 2025. Why is this part of the 2025 budget and not part of the fiscal year '26 budget, since he is hired effective July 1, 2025? Regardless of the year you charge it to, why isn't it a cost of the town manager's budget and not the council's budget? No one will remember why that miscellaneous charge is in the council budget years from now. The next part is where the monies are coming from. Does the general fund have an account called Judgment Settlements that is not in the budget book, which now has funds in it from the money saved from the Hernandez lawsuit? If so, what is the balance projected to be at the end of June 30, 2025? In a somewhat related area, the town attorney's office needed to pay the outside attorneys for their assistance in settling the Hernandez case for $60,000. Once again, the monies are coming from an account that I do not see in the budget book called Judgment Settlements, which is an account 1013000-582000, which of course is an expensive account. This is the same account used above to find monies for the travel expense of a new manager. If I have read correctly, we saved $340,000 from the Hernandez lawsuit and spent $9,000 and $60,000, which is nets, which nets to a savings of $271,000. Please explain if we appropriated the $1,025,000 for this lawsuit and where it is and what will happen to the rest of the unspent funds this fiscal year. I'm sure you have all asked this question in your caucuses, so the information should be available tonight. I'll come back for more. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Wendy Osada, 8 Windmill Road, Enfield, and I am currently a member of the Enfield Greater Together Community Fund Advisory Committee. For those who did not hear my last presentation here in March, we lead a process to identify the needs of our community and oversee grant-making, aim to ensure that the Greater Together Community Funds can have the greatest impact for the benefit of Enfield residents. The committee has kicked off another grant-making cycle. The maximum grant award is $5,000. The deadline to apply is July 7. To be eligible for a grant, grants must be utilized to benefit the community of Enfield. Organizations applying must be exempt under a 501(c)(3), or organizations that are not classified as a 501(c)(3) may use a fiscal sponsor that is. Also, the advisory committee is currently seeking new committee members. The committee plays a lead role in deciding how Enfield's Greater Together Community Funds will be used. The meetings are held on the second Thursday of each month. We are, excuse me, we are eager to hear from anyone who is eligible and interested in joining us. Enfield residents, as long as you don't hold a town-elected position, are eligible to apply for the committee, including students and young adults as at least 14-plus. And again, as I mentioned the last time, this could be a really great community service opportunity for students. To either apply for a grant or for a position on the advisory committee, please search online for the Enfield Greater Together Community Fund. And I also said this last time, but be careful, there is a very similar-named organization in the United Kingdom, so make sure you have the one in the United States. I have the name of the organization printed out on papers. I can give you along with my contact number in case you have any questions. Thank you for your time. For those watching, please consider applying for a grant or serving on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up, sir? No?
I did. If you want to let her go.
Come on up.
He wants you to go first.
Well, I saw him first, so.
Stinking ladies first, that's all right. All right. Hello, Gary Young, 320 Abbey Road. I'm not going to put a lot of numbers out here. I just want to touch base regarding traffic calming. I'm going to focus on Abbey Road specifically, which is the street that I reside on. Over the course of the last couple of years, I've been in front of this council multiple times, asking for some assistance, because that particular street is an absolute cut through. We have three sidewalks, which are broken sections. We now have two additional elderly couples that are across the street, and the section that we live on specifically, where the broken sidewalk is, has, I think, three or four different families with children. The problem that we have now is that the 30 mile an hour zone has become 60 miles an hour plus and greater during three specific times of the day. Morning commute, during the lunch window, and during the evening dinnertime. I understand people want to either get to their job, or they want to get home, and they have a short window for lunch. However, the traffic safety on that street is exceptionally gone up over the last 18 years that we've lived there. It takes 3.1 seconds to get between two specific traffic poles on our street. I know exactly how fast specific cars are going, and I can tell you right now, they are in excess of 60 miles an hour. We have people that intentionally drive the speed limit or just well above it by 10 miles an hour. Mind you, this is a double yellow line street. We now have people that pass in the double yellow line. We need some help. I have no problem meeting with you, Mr. Nelson. I know it's your district. I have no problem meeting with the chief of police as well, but something needs to be done. This is a selfish ask now. I understand there's a problem throughout the entire town, but I'm now concerned about our specific street. In addition, school now is being let out, and there are middle schoolers that are now using the powered bicycles and the, the, I can't think of the other item, but it's, it's like a skateboard, powered skateboard. They are riding in the street, and there's a blind spot, you know what I'm talking about, right at that dip. If something happens where one of those kids is too far in the street, it's, it's going to be a problem, and I don't want to see the same thing that happened to the poor young lady on Route 140 in East Windsor a year ago be the reason that we do something. So I'm looking for some help. In addition to that, I wanted to make a couple other quick notes, if I may. I didn't put together an official type read-through here. Regarding the age-speed monitor and equipment, I believe that we need to do something to help Chief Fox regarding the speed equipment that he's currently working with. His email to us back in October of '24, "The only display trailer that collects speed data is the one at Abbey and Taft, currently not the one near 320. The others are too old and do not function to collect data. The units are solar-powered, so the concern is one not working is likely because it's not adequately charged, and furthermore, the age of the units means the battery probably will not hold the charge proper anymore." That's the same unit that's right now on Route 140, Broadbrook Road. So the one that I mentioned in the email is the same one now that is on Broadbrook Road, and it shuts down after a few hours' worth of, of use. So we need to help him somehow get his equipment up. And then the last thing that I'll put out here real quickly is regarding the taxes. I'm going to suggest two quick links be added to the town homepage, simply to help people understand what's coming, because it's coming. The first thing is going to be their vehicle taxes are different this year. Mine specifically, and I know, well, there are a lot of other people are going to have the same concern, if we have a quick link on the town homepage to show everybody exactly how to figure out what their assessed values are going to be, I'm going to tell you now, that person answering the tax collector's phone is going to be very happy, because right now, they're not going to, she's not going to be able to take all the calls. It's going to be overwhelming. My vehicle tax is going to go from $40 probably to about $212, just as an example, okay? And then the other thing is the property tax calculator, because the mill rate went up, obviously it did, not by much, but it had to go up, but it does impact people's property, and I would definitely recommend, instead of having to go four layers into the town site, put a link right on the homepage for the tax collector, for the property tax calculator. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Gary.
Gary.
Gary. Thinking of his dad.
I raised my hand with the water meter thing before because I didn't know what a deficit meter was. Could anybody answer that? Or you can't answer questions when?
I'll answer it when?
Okay. All right. I have two items that I wanted to talk about. The first is, the ACLU reported that there are eight cities in Connecticut that share DMV records with ICE, so that undocumented immigrants can be apprehended regardless whether they're criminals or not, and Enfield is one of them. Trump has paused the apprehending farm, hotel, and restaurant immigrants because his friends have told him that these workers are needed. And I'm going to quote Pope Francis. He said, "Migrants and refugees are not pawns on the chessboard of humanity." And I want to consider that present-day immigrants came here for a better life, out of poverty or fear or both. And our borders are now closed. Immigrants that are here now, for the most part, work hard and contribute to our society. Let them live here without fear of being targeted by ICE, deported, sent to El Salvador or wherever else. I think that most, if not all, of the council aligns to Christianity, excuse me. We need to align our actions accordingly. And just another quote from JFK, "Everywhere, immigrants have enriched and strengthened the fabric of American life." And the second question I have, it was mentioned earlier by George, I think, and the question is, why is the working-class town of Enfield paying $9,000 for the new town manager to move here? Sorry, just.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for the first time? Lucian.
Lucian LaFave, 54 Kimberly Drive, also chairman of the Enfield Veterans Council. This is the first chance I've had since the parade to come in front of this group and to get on the TV to express my thanks to the community for coming out for our Memorial Day Parade. It was a great crowd out there. I'm glad they came out to honor the veterans that gave all. Also, I want to give thanks to everybody involved in getting that parade off and going. I'm the face of the Veterans Council when I come here, but I'm not a one-man Veterans Council. There's a team behind me that works hard to get these parades that we put on to be as good as they are. Also, the cooperation that I get from the town of Enfield. So through the mayor, to the town manager, if you could express my appreciation to all the different departments, the Police Department for traffic control, I mean, they're part of the parade, the explorers that marched, the auxiliary that actually does the traffic control, you know, makes it happen for us, buildings and grounds to set up the green, you know, down to the minutia of where do we put the porta-pots? It's, it's amazing the support that I get from this town and that the veterans get. Whenever we ask for something, it's never, well, I don't know. The first thing out of anybody's mouth is, what else do you need? That is greatly appreciated by the veteran community of this town, and I just want to thank the council, the town manager's office, all the departments in the town, and the community in general for coming out and supporting the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucian.
I think this is the first time I've ever came here as a public citizen. My name's Randy Daigle, 55 Cottage Road. I just want to piggyback on what Frank Triano was, was talking about, that intersection, and that you guys all agreed upon how terrible that is. I'm all for with what they're doing, but the town is somewhat responsible for that. When you guys approved Wynn Stanley to have 70 to 112 tractor trailers go up that road by having the, the distribution center put in, it caused it to be a hell of a lot worse than it was before. Secondly, you guys and P&amp;Z also approved Wynn Stanley put an 899,000 square foot warehouse distribution center on the other property they own. Luckily, Amazon purchased it. Well, they only want to do a 200,000 square foot property, so, which is currently the same size as the one that Wynn Stanley put across from Fermi. So you're going to be looking at another 70 to 112 trucks, depending upon what day, going in there. As you guys have just mentioned, it's a terrible intersection. It only got worse, and I would like to have you guys keep this conversation in your mind when Amazon comes back, comes to you within the next couple of months, asking for approval for their new distribution center that they plan on putting up there. And I'm also, would like to talk to P&amp;Z and explain the same concerns. It, it was always bad, but it got 10 times worse, and it's going to get 100 times worse if this other distribution center gets approved. So thank you guys for everything.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else for the first time? Walter.
I also came here to wish the town manager well and thank him for all the many hats he wore in his, in his service to this town, so. And maybe he is watching from home, and I, and I don't blame you for not watching from home, because I fall asleep. And I, and I don't blame you for not watching from home, because I fall asleep every time I watch this meeting. But anyway, piggyback on what Frank Triano was here. The town got screwed on Elm Street way back in the 80s when they widened Elm Street. It was supposed to be widened all the way up to the prisons. Back when I bought the, the property, it made Peerless Way, I spoke with a lot of the neighbors up, up there, up past my, and there, that that, that four lane road was not supposed to end there, it was supposed to go all the way up to the prison. So we got screwed by the state, and we're still getting screwed by the state. And then I, and then I also got screwed by the state, because I had to make a bypass lane for Peerless Way at, at a cost of $200,000 that came out of my pocket. And, you know, luckily I took a parcel, 30 acre parcel that paid 800 bucks in taxes back in the 90s, and now pays over a quarter million a year, and then not including the personal property, so. And, and again, the only, the only thing the town has to do is snowplow their street, so. But that's one thing. And then watching last week's meeting that I did stay awake for. Yes, thank you, Mr. Town Attorney, for saving $300,000, but in my book, and it was something that, that Council Ludwig mentioned a few meetings ago, when we had the town planners here going, giving us free service to look at our town and giving us, you know, working pro bono. That case was supposed to be pro bono also. So in my book, they should have got six bucks. Ten, $10 she won, and 60% should have went to the lawyer, so I don't understand where $800,000 came from. And I hate to say it, it was all over a whiteboard, believe it or not. She wanted a whiteboard that she couldn't go out and buy, so. So we did accommodate her, we did give her, we did have documents prepared for executive session that she never showed up for. We, we did do all the accommodations for her, but it is what it is. But again, my, my book was that that case was taken under pro bono, was supposed to be pro bono, and it, and it wasn't. So, anyway, thank you all. Thank you again for your service, Mr. Town Manager, hopefully he's watching. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time?
George Young, 8 Holly Lane, Enfield, Connecticut. The next resolution I'd like to speak about is 13C, which is to transfer funds from EMS billing of $12,500. You're moving monies from an income account to an expense account to cover additional charges for the billing agent's fee. I applaud the efforts of the EMS to exceed their income budget by nearly 5% through May. I understand the additional costs to pay the fee. That brings up another question as to why the town shouldn't reduce the transfer of $1,084,000 to EMS this year, since they have additional income to offset some of that transfer. EMS continues to estimate their income at $3 million a year, when in reality it has been above that for the last two years. A better estimate of revenue would reduce the town's contribution in our taxes. The next question I have is, can't we do a better job of negotiating the 3.5% fee that is charged on 100% of the service fees? Are the monies paid to an outside contractor, or is it to the town? The fire district renegotiated their fee, and EMS should do likewise. Last month, there was a presentation of the savings that the Woodsonia project would save the developer over 10 years, which was nearly $3 million by deferring their payment for one year. There was a chart attached to the project, which saw our mill rate go from 30.56 in 2025 to 37.65 in 2035. That's an increase of 22.9%, in case anyone forgot to read the whole exhibit. That does not include the fire district tax or the reappraisal of our homes, which could happen two times in the next 10 years. The council needs to start thinking about that effect on the homeowners. If we are paying $5,000 annually in home taxes now, that equates to $6,145 in 2035. One more comment. The DPW needs to take a look at the Freshwater Boulevard extension. That island needs some work to eliminate the weeds that are growing up next to it. It makes it even worse, because the property next door, which the town maintains, is just absolutely, I think it's done by donated services, to maintain that property across from the island. It really looks nice, so, thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to Councilman Communications. So tonight, I'm going to go first. George, the Hernandez account, the money was placed in a account for next year's budget, not this year's budget. It doesn't even exist yet. So the budget was approved, the funding was approved through the court, to be put in a special account out of next year's budget. So we're not next year yet, so the account doesn't exist yet. So we just won't put as much money in that account. As far as Marjorie, the 9K for moving expenses for the town manager, that has been in the town manager's contract since before I even started on the council, in 2005. That was in Matt Coppler's contract. Brian got it. If Ellen had moved to town, she would have got it. If Chris moved to town, he would have got it. This is nothing new. It is standard language in the contract, because I asked the same question. I did.
I'm a little outrageous.
Couldn't argue it. Deduct meters. That was your question. What is a deduct meter? A deduct meter is you have a water meter in your home. Okay? It's the same exact thing. So the water comes in your house, goes through your water meter, then it goes to your house. What the plumber does is he cuts the line, and for your outside faucets and your sprinkler system, he runs a separate line just to them. And then the rest of the house continues normally from your regular water meter. At the end of your billing cycle, you call the town and you tell them what the reading is on your deduct meter, and they minus that off of your sewer bill, because that water never made it into the sewer system. For people with larger yard sprinkler systems and stuff like that, trust me, it'll save you a lot of money to do it. So I hope that it?
Yeah, that answers it. I just never heard of it.
No problem. Gary Young, Abbey Road. And I think Councilman Crissati will back me up, and so will Councilman Ludwig. It is a topic in public safety. It is a very big topic in public safety. We are looking at all different speed calming devices. You can see we put signs on Route 5, we're putting speed bumps on newer roads, and we're actually looking at the best type of a temporary speed bump that maybe we can move throughout town. But again, the speed of the road dictates what type of speed bump it is. So if the speed limit's 25 miles an hour, a speed bump can only be X. If the speed limit's 45, it's a totally different. So it is the topic of discussion. You're correct, Abbey Road is not the only road, but I'm going to say Abbey Road, maybe because I'm District 1, is one of the main ones. And I do see it myself. I mean, I went up to Neelens Park the other day, and Neelens Road, it, it's just, they don't stop at that intersection anymore. It's just, I don't get it. But it's everywhere, and everybody has a legit complaint. And Bob, will you verify? We are working on it 100%. We're trying to find the best way to start something, because we can't let it keep going. Last week, the police department did a major traffic enforcement throughout town, and I believe they gave out over 150 tickets. Everybody saw on Facebook and stuff, what are all the police doing and this and that? They just went full blast, and that's what we have to do. And shockingly, most residents support it, because they're sick of it. You know, the way people are driving now is insane, and, you know, it could be my family or yours that ends up in an accident, and they were just minding their own business. So we're trying, don't give up on us. And when we know more, I'll, if I remember, just give me a call, I'll let you know where So the main thing I wanted to say is, Chris, tonight would have been Chris's last meeting. And Chris has stepped up for this town for, I'm going to say, almost 40 years, between town attorney, public safety director, town manager. He's just here when we need him. And it's hard to find somebody in this world that you can count on when you need him. When things are pretty rough, he steps right up. Tom, you know, you're sitting here, you did the same thing for us. And for that, I really don't have the words to thank Chris as much as he should be thanked for everything he has done for this town over the years. I am kind of sad that he's not here tonight. I, I think I understand why. He's a very humbled man, and he didn't want to be part of this. And I'm still not going to let him off that easy, because I know I owe him quite a bit, because he was one of the reasons that I believe we had such a successful term this year. And with him as lead, I just don't see how we could have gone wrong. The riverfront, the mall, Triano's property, the development that came to town under his leadership, the grants that we received from the state of Connecticut, unlike anything I ever remember, the amount of money that he was able to bring home to Enfield is huge. And I don't think the people realize how much the town manager actually is involved in that. And for that, I'm grateful to him. And he's not off the hook yet, because I will see him before his last day, and I'll deal with it then. But I wanted to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Chris Bromson, for everything you've done for the town of Enfield. Next, John?
Okay, thank you. Caught me off guard there. I, I have a few comments. Gary, you know, this is, over the past several years, I know that you've been, you know, having this issue over on Abbey Road. We are in public safety, determining certain areas to be able to put these speed bumps in to help out, so. And the other thing that, that you brought up is the, you know, the, the police sign there with, you know, I also did see over on, off of Broadbrook Road, it's not working, you know, when certain, you know, it only works for X amount of hours, and then all of a sudden, you know, people are flying through there. So it's very important. Thank you for bringing that up. We definitely have to help the police department out with that. George, thanks for all your comments. They all make sense. Well, I wish I had more answers to give to you, but the mayor did mention in regard to the expenses, that, that has been in there for a number of years under the contract. Just want to state that congratulations to the class of 2025, Enfield High School graduates. Best of luck to all of you. Your graduation's tomorrow night. And congratulations to the class of 25 with adult ed graduation. Many of us did attend the ceremony at the annex, and that was a great ceremony. Coming up this Saturday, Juneteenth Festival on the town green with the Ujima African American Alliance Group. Once again, their festival will begin at 11 o'clock in the morning. I do want to congratulate Amy, Amy Santinella on being selected Enfield's Teacher of the Year. Quite a well-deserved award. She's a special ed teacher over at JFK, and I've known Amy for several years. I can remember when she first started here in Enfield. She is very dedicated. She has turned that best buddies program into a statewide, well-known club for kids with disabilities and their respective partners. So once again, Amy, congratulations from all of us on a award well-deserved. So I did want to mention that in tonight's meeting. There was something that was going to be brought up, but today, as I was driving down Route 5 on the corner of Route 5 and Oliver Road, I was going to mention to the town manager through the mayor with this grass that's really been, you know, about two feet high. But when I was driving through today, they, they were working on it, so that's been taken care of, so, so thank, thank you for that. That's really all that I have in regard to Mr. Bromson. I'll see him before his last day, and, you know, I'll just move onward, so, thank you.
Okay, the only thing I got is, I was away the last couple Sundays, but I was in town this Sunday, and I did go to the farmer's market. And I just want to remind everybody to the farmer's market from 9 to 12 on Sundays behind the town hall. It was great to see all the vendors out there. So just reminding everybody about it, that's all.
Jeff?
Thank you. Gary, thanks for speaking about Abbey Road. Unfortunately, your story is a very similar one to a lot of residents that I've been hearing from on other roads within Enfield. For people that know what I do for work, you know, I pretty much go to every fatal motor vehicle accident that happens in Hartford. If a fatal motor vehicle accident happens tonight, that's where I'm going to be. So I know for certain that speed kills, and I've been to too many accidents, seen too many heartbreak, too many loved ones lost, and definitely something's got to be done about it. I was glad to see the surge that Enfield PD had over the weekend, I think that was on Friday night. Hopefully we can do some more of those. But let's be clear, when you're driving 60 miles an hour in a 30, and you're going around double yellow lines, that's not speeding anymore. That's, that's, that's not a speeding civilization, that is a criminal offense, and that's an arrestable offense. So I hope our police department, if they observe actions like that, that we're not just writing tickets, that we're writing summonses, sending people to court, and hitting them hard. And if they get convicted of reckless driving, they lose their license. That's how people learn. I'm not a big fan of the speed cards, warnings, I'm, I'm a big fan of enforcement. And, and people don't just start driving 60 miles an hour overnight. They've graduated to that, which means they've been speeding, 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 getting away with it, and now they start, you know, getting a little more reckless. And eventually someone gets hurt, someone gets killed. So I feel for you. It, it's an issue all over Enfield, and I've been hearing about it quite a bit. Switching gears here, Enfield High School graduates, 2025. They worked hard, they earned that degree, the diploma. I'm going to be there tomorrow night. I understand that every year there's a graduation, it usually rains. There is some rain in the forecast, so I'm going to ask everyone tonight to go home before they go to bed and pray to the weather gods that at least it can be a cloudy day. Doesn't have to be a sunny night, it can be cloudy, no rain for tomorrow night. And let's see. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilman Hendrickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question is, we talked about a special meeting for the nonprofits to present, do a presentation for their taxpayer money going back to them. I would like to set that, if I could, with possibly like a seven minute limit on their presentation or something, before our July meeting. I believe we have one in July. I would like to put that out there. Just, okay.
So?
Do I need a?
Right.
You have one, correct.
So can we get that tomorrow, send out an email? So, can we, um, get that tomorrow, send out an email? And why don't we put it on a regular Monday, that we would've normally?
The one, the one meeting?
No, Monday is the...
So, you don't wanna do it at a town council, you wanna do it as a special meeting?
Oh, you want...
Well, this would be a special meeting.
Right, prior to the twenty...
I'm suggesting before our one meeting.
Right.
Whatever date that is.
So, when's the first Monday?
I don't think we have the first Monday.
We have one in July, but at the end of July. I'm asking about putting a special meeting in the beginning of July.
So, you don't wanna do it before our regular meeting?
It is before our regular meeting. Our regular meeting's the end of July.
Right, that's, I'm suggesting we do it before that meet, not before the meeting. I mean, hours before the meeting.
Oh, you wanna do it the same night?
That's what I'm saying. Before got confusing, I don't know.
I would be okay with that, but the concern I have, Bob, is what else is on the agenda as far as special, uh, meeting, executive session?
Yeah, I don't know.
And I don't wanna short-change the nonprofits if we end up only having, I mean, we can, um...
I'm leaving it up to the council, I'm just suggesting.
It's up to you guys. Would you prefer to do an early meeting on...
The twenty-first?
The twenty-first, or have a special meeting?
On the seventh.
Right, right, that's why I said if he emailed us. Yeah, just email the council tomorrow, please, Steve, and ask what they would prefer. Me personally, I don't care either way.
So, what I'm understanding is either come early on the July twenty-first meeting or have a special meeting on July seventh? Is that my understanding?
Correct, right, yes. All right, also, through the mayor to the assistant town manager, can I get an update on the BOE audit? I've heard nothing about this, just looking for some kind of what's going on there. Also, to Mr. Young, um, on the non, on the volunteer tax credit, it wasn't just income limitations. Believe me, there was a couple other problems with that that we weren't happy with. I have asked about a senior tax freeze before. I'm told we cannot do it, the state won't allow us. That might be something I've heard before. So, I, I think it would be a great idea, but I'm told we can't do it. So, that was my one, one of my first things I asked our finance director about, so. And that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Deputy Mayor Pisner?
So, I'm just gonna mimic everybody and say congratulations to class of 2025, but also, I'm gonna wish every one of our students, staff, and faculty a happy, safe, and healthy summer. It is well-deserved. Um, congratulations to Amy Santinella. It's my understanding that there's four teachers that get whittled down. Um, congratulations to each and every one of them. Even to make the cut, the first cut, is a big deal. But congratulations to Amy for making the final one. And then Saturday, ten to four will be, uh, Juneteenth here on the Enfield Square. It's put on by Ujima. Chad and Reverend Swift do a great job with it, and I will plan on being there. So, stop by, they have vendors, all kinds of musical events. So, it, it's a great day and a great event, so hope to see you there.
Okay, um, I'll save my comments for graduation till tomorrow night. So, we will move on to the, uh, town manager's report. And under that report, if we could get an update from John Wilcox about the audit for the Board of Education?
We can do that now. John, can you come up and speak?
Yes, we had an introductory, um, teams meeting with, uh, between the superintendent, myself, the, um, and the, um, business manager, and the auditors from CL&amp;A. They've also sent me a statement of work agreement, which I am going to be forwarding to the council just for their review and make sure that, so that, um, the town manager can sign off on it. We are expecting, um, a report by the end of the summer.
John, can you elaborate on the delay? Was it their work schedule, or what was the delay?
Elaborate on the delays, um, well, we appropriated funds for the budget for the, the thing at the beginning of this, um, calendar year. All right, that's right in the middle of budget season, and I just didn't get the information over to them and get it done. So...
Thank you, John.
It's a delay.
And then, just to continue with the town manager's report, uh, since he's not here, I'm gonna take the liberty to expound a little further on what you said, um, because you are correct. Chris does not solicit praise, but he often gives praise. He's a humble man. And, um, I can speak from someone who works in the town manager's office. It was a little tumultuous time. Uh, and he came in, immediately provided leadership, stability, calm. And I mean, I know I'm speaking on behalf of all the directors, but he hit the ground running. Literally, I think the first day of the job, he was taking a call from Woodsonia. I mean, that's how he operates. And, uh, that's gonna be part of his legacy here. That's not just changing the map of, uh, Enfield, it's changed the DNA. And he works, I see him, I saw him work very hard on that, back and forth. We all did. That was a, that was a huge, I, I think he came back for a reason. And, um, but he also hurt in the buildings. He bought the, he helped bring in the school security officers. A resounding success. That's, I, we've heard nothing but positive feedback in our, uh, subcommittee meetings. In less than two years, he's done more work than I would compare with any town manager in the state of Connecticut. I really would, and I'm close to a lot of towns. So, um, he came back at the right time. He wanted, he thought he was gonna retire March first. Well, we had different plans, but he stayed on, and I'm grateful personally, uh, during the budget, cuz I know I wouldn't be able to handle all that. So, um, I'm, I'm very appreciative, and I speak for the ba, behalf of the employees of the town and the directors of the town of what he brought in this short period of time. So, um, that's what I, a few more boards I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thank you. See, he should be here to be humiliated, cuz I know he would be, so. Town Attorney's Report?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, I do have a couple of things that are important. First one is, uh, councilman, uh, excuse me, Congressman Courtney's office has been diligently following through on, on the issue we've had from Springfield emptying into Connecticut River. And through his office, Karen Westalisa has forwarded me an email and some attachments. And, um, he'd made official inquiry through the EPA federally, and he's, uh, still following through, monitoring what's going on with that, uh, entire problem. I'm just trying to read parts of it. So, the EPA is actively overseeing the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission's efforts to eliminate the combined sewer water overflows pursuant to a 2014 administrative order. I believe John Santinella spoke to that the last time and educated someone on us. And then, um, there are three phases. They're all long-term, so it's gonna take a while. But also, uh, there was a, an amendment to it in 2020 in order to try and, um, enhance conveyance and storage capacities. So, they've been trying to work on their problem, uh, for many years, and they're still working on it. And the, um, so Congressman Courtney wanted to let us know and everyone in the public that he's still working on it also, and the EPA remains committed to supporting this work. So, I'm gonna forward this atta, this email to, um, to Chris and to Steve tomorrow morning, and then he can forward it on to, to all of you. There's also three links that are on there. There's nothing that's, um, uh, of an emergency notice that would've required, you know, you to be informed last week. When I first got it, and I was requested to just make it, um, as part of my report tonight, so I did. I had, uh, at the time, though, uh, discussed it with the town manager to make sure, was there something in here that I should like, let you people know immediately? And, um, and we decided it, it wasn't, especially with everything else that's going on locally and in the world today. So, that's, that's one. The second thing is, I wanted to report on the Deer Park Recycling Facility application going on at the state line, uh, which is gonna affect about a hundred and ten residences in Shaker Pines directly. It's also gonna eventually affect people and, um, uh, as, as any contamination of water supply flows down through freshwater into the Connecticut River. And it's gonna empty, uh, at the Donald Barnes, um, uh, let's see. Bear with me one minute, please. Yeah, the Donald Barnes Boat Launch. We have two boat launches, as you know, on the Connecticut River, and a lot of Enfield residents use them for recreational activities. They fish, they boat, they swim. And so, this one, uh, could potentially be contaminated also. And with what's going on from Springfield coming down through the Connecticut River, now, this, if it gets approved, could have a major impact on us also. But at least this one, we have an opportunity to say something and do something about. So, last Friday night, I did go to the, um, public hearing in East Long Meadow. And they have, uh, and this is before the East Long Meadow Board of Health. They have different rules in East Long Meadow for their public hearings, especially on stuff going through the Department of Environmental Protection in Mass. Uh, we did research it, and I had filed for, uh, to register ahead of time so that I could speak. And also, I asked for intervenor status and indicated that I wanted to show how the town of Enfield would be substantially and specifically affected should this facility be, as it's proposed, go through. And, um, I'm happy to report that, uh, the hearing, um, in Massachusetts, East Long Meadow, they have a retired judge that conducts the hearing. The panel of their board of health is three ladies, one of whom's a doctor. Uh, but they did find that the town could be substantially and specifically affected. So, we got intervenor status, which could be a big deal, depending on what else happens. And part of the reason we got the intervenor status was we had, uh, supplied them with a copy of a letter that, from the town council, signed by, uh, Mayor Nelson dated April eighth, that expressed a lot of concerns to DEM, or DEP in Mass, about this particular project. And, um, we never heard back from the, the Department of Environmental Protection, didn't hear from anybody. What we subsequently found out, um, upon checking all the records in Massachusetts, is that, in fact, the applicant had answered, uh, the letter on April twenty-second, filed it with Department of Environmental Protection, and neither the applicant nor Department of Environmental Protection saw fit to forward a copy of that to, uh, the mayor. And, um, and actually, our office wasn't aware of any of this until we started to get involved with about two weeks ago, or maybe three weeks ago now. And so, um, that kinda rubbed us the wrong way. When I got there, uh, I will say that the atmosphere was, from the audience, was unfriendly. And the, however, the board was polite, they were cordial, they were, um, professional. The hearing officer, the retired judge, was very professional. So, I was treated, uh, well by them. But the, um, the audience was very anti-Enfield, anti-Connecticut, and who do we think we are? What are we doing there? And, um, just, just so everybody can find and figure out where this is, uh, I think it's, if you go by the prisons on Taylor Road and you're heading towards East Long Meadow, soon as you cross the state line on the left-hand side is Deer, Deer Park. And, um, this particular lot where they're gonna do this development, recycling, they proposed to use a railroad, which may not ever get built. And also, in between, when the railroad does go through, uh, and, and now, they intend on running at least a hundred fifty trucks a day. And the reason we're gonna be affected as, um, I think it was, was it Randy Daigle that talked about traffic on Elm Street and, and Hassett Avenue? And that's one of the things that I tried stressing, uh, during the hearing, is they're soliciting, oh, even if the railroad came in, that's gonna affect like sixteen trucks a day, but they're saying there's gonna be at least a hundred fifty. So, and it's gonna come through Enfield, so we're gonna get these hundred fifty trucks, and that's what they say, an estimate. So, whenever they say that, we figure, uh, that's on the low side. So, they claimed that they spoke with Long Meadow about, uh, about it, and Long Meadow didn't have any problem with it. Well, of course, cuz they're not going through Long Meadow, they're going through Enfield and going by the prison out that way, and then coming back, most likely, that way. So, that was one major problem we had with it. The other one that was, um, I think probably carries some weight in case we wanted to, uh, appeal it in the event there's a negative decision, is that the state of Connecticut, DEEP, publishes a natural diversity database area map that shows this location directly connected with or abutting, uh, this project. And it, it describes an area, which was highlighted on the map when we passed it in as an exhibit. And the state says it's, quote, "a known location of state and federal-listed species and critical habitats," unquote. So, we, what we had asked, uh, actually, Mayor Nelson had asked in the beginning, we think this area should be investigated by Connecticut DEEP. And I stressed again, uh, the, that it should be investigated. Uh, I also commented on the negative comments that were made from the audience about me being there even to say, well, who does Enfield think they are? You know, your, um, your comments doesn't mean anything, you're in Massachusetts. And I did tell them, I realize I'm not in Kansas anymore. But on the other hand, this is a direct impact on the state of Connecticut and the town of Enfield, especially people in Shaker Pines, uh, Lake, directly. And then, from there, flowing down, um, to the Connecticut River. And so, uh, I, I didn't wanna see the same thing happening again, that we didn't know what's going on years ago, uh, and with regard to Springfield and the sewage. Well, we now know what is proposed here. So, um, with that being said, uh, I've learned today that they're gonna, they have to make a decision by July twenty-eighth. And, um, we had asked when they're gonna deliberate it, because in Mass, they have to deliberate it in public. So, I'll be able to see deliberations, and that's gonna be July tenth. So, uh, they may make their decision prior to the twenty-eighth of July. And whenever they do, um, then perhaps we can have a, an executive session to work in with your, your schedule, with whatever you already have going. And then, I will have some options for the town that I'm working on now to try to make it, um, so that it doesn't cost the town any money to have perhaps someone, uh, do a pro bono for us. Like a lot of other people get pro bono, well, you know, we're not that big a town faced with, uh, uh, now an assault from both sides. So, that's, um, that's the extent of my report on, on Deer Park. And, uh, I, I know I spoke with Chris earlier today, and he gave me a note that he wanted me to read in case he didn't make it tonight. So, we're just trying to find that note for a minute. Oh, here it is, okay. So, it says, uh, "Tom, please tell everyone how much I appreciate their kind words, and let them know," his handwriting's a little tough, "all I am I owe to Tom." Okay, so that's, that's, um, in these, these notes. So, with that, I'll end my report.
All right, so, yeah, so what I would say, Tom, is this is a priority. Of course, East Long Meadow was upset you're in the room, because they want the business, but they know it's gonna come through Enfield. I guarantee if we block Taylor Road, right at the state line, their attitude would change totally. So, we're already getting complaints about Brainerd Road. The trucks coming out of Wind Stanley and the old Hallmark property and stuff like that. Well, you know these truck drivers are gonna bank it right there on Bacon Road and go down Brainerd to get on the highway, where they could just as easily go through Long Meadow to Route Five and get on the highway. So, um, if you need an executive session? You let us know. I think everybody's sitting here. We will drop what we're doing, and we will have an executive session, because this is a priority. I truly appreciate you going, and, um, keep us up to speed, please.
I, I actually enjoyed it. You know, I mean, I've often said, if you can't be loved by someone, you at least wanna have, uh, someone that hates you, that...
Oh, I know that feeling.
You get tremendous satisfaction out of that, too. So, I, I kinda wish Jean was here to hear me tonight, but, uh, but anyway. I appreciate her the last time telling, uh, telling the world that Tom... Tom's right, you know, so I don't have that T-shirt on tonight, but I'll wear it to one of these days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, Tom, thank you for going, I do appreciate that. Also, you mentioned Connecticut D E P coming out to check the wildlife, is that something that we've sent them a letter to have them come out, or no?
No, we said that we want them to come out and do it, but it should come from the project, the application, D E P in Massachusetts, Kenny told them that back in April, they get this letter in response, and now, you have to understand, the way they work in Massachusetts, anything we do, we have to give everybody a copy of it ahead of time, and I have to sign a paper saying, under penalty of perjury, this is true and correct, yet they ignored Kenny's letter on behalf of the town, it was very articulate, very well-written, had real concerns in there, and yet the applicant ignored it, and the Department of Environmental Protection of Massachusetts ignored it, and with this particular group, as nice as they are, there was an engineer who was hired by one of the people that opposed this project, and that engineer gave a very well-defined and detailed report about some objections to it. The only question that came out of the Board of Health members for that engineer, though, was, who's paying you? And I was struck by it because I'm thinking, now, the other side has their engineers, architects, all the rest of this stuff, and she didn't ask them, well, who's paying you? And the fact that the person may be paid by somebody who opposed it doesn't mean it's not accurate, I mean, you're talking about engineering stuff, which is quantitative rather than qualitative, so you have, you know, one-on-one is two, or one-on-one isn't two. And so it just, you know, and they had no questions for me whatsoever, the public had some, but not the board, so I just saw rubber stamp all over it, so you can kind of tell where it's going. As polite as they were, it just looks like it's heading down that path. But we have some ideas to discuss an executive session that we think we can help protect not just the people at Shaker Pines, but everybody with the roads, everybody going down Elm Street, Bacon Road, any of this stuff, these trucks are going to be going that way and then back again, it's just, and what they're carrying may be stuff that we don't really want going through our town, so...
Well, I don't have any faith in them asking for a D E P wildlife report, so if that's something we have to reach out to our own Connecticut D E P to get that report to help, I think we should...
Well, right now, we, D E P would not get involved in it unless we had permission from D E P up in Massachusetts and so on, I've run across this before, otherwise, D E E P was notified of this project, and they haven't said anything, and so, and even if they give us a report, it's not going to make any difference, we need to make it an exhibit and part of the record. At this stage, I made it, the fact that they didn't ask, in fact, I did ask the, their spokesperson on the record, did you ever ask D E E P in Connecticut to evaluate the impact on what I just described? And the answer was no. So for our purposes, that's good, you know, I mean, it would be better if they asked them, but they didn't want to ask them, because they know what the answer would be, which would derail them to some degree, so...
All set, Bob? Anyone else for Tom?
No.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you, yep. And actually, we thank Chris, too, I mean, he's been here as a town manager, town attorney, director of public safety, as you said, and you know, you often think of those as things where you think of the saying, you can be a jack of all trades, master of none, Chris actually was a master of those trades and a jackass of none, so for what it's worth, I personally appreciate Chris being here, too, for all these years. I can say these things because I'm old. Thanks.
Thank you. And do you have any update for us on Woodsonia?
I don't have anything to say on Woodsonia, no.
All right, thank you. All right, good. All right, so we're going to move on to reports to special committees of the council, Councilman Crissati?
Yes, I'd like to report on the pre-K to 5 Eagle Academy pre-referendum building committee. We met last Wednesday under the tutelage of Randy Dagel, who's here tonight, and this should be a good night for us. I just want to give everybody a little lowdown as to the meeting. Two presentations from J C J Architecture and Tekton Architects. There were five major criteria to select from their presentations. First one was the project's size and scope, the second one is the team experience with pre-referendum and support to educate the public, the three proposed teams' experience with school facilities and the relationship with working with the state, the fourth one was proposed teams' approach to work required, and five proposed teams' approach with organization and those with subconsultants to work with state for the requirements of the project. Both firms presented their proposals, both firms were very good. After discussion, it was a pretty easy unanimous decision. We have selected Tekton Architects, they were very thorough, very professional, very impressive, and based on the five criteria, they really stood out on three or four of the criteria which separated them from J C J. And, you know, this group is ready to start, excellent qualifications, they're well-prepared, and, you know, they scored the highest in terms of how we graded on the rubric. I know Randy's here tonight, I know we're here for Resolution D, the superintendent's here, we're really looking forward to getting this project rolling.
Beautiful.
Yep.
All set?
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else seeing, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Pisner?
So I just have one thing, at the last TIF meeting, we were discussing a couple of the businesses that have moved downtown, one is the Black Crow Coffee Shop, and they went to the Economic Development Office to ask about possibly doing yoga on the green space there where the monument is. So I brought it up to the mayor, and I also said one of the other things that they were thinking about was possibly doing like movies on the green, which I think are both great ideas. I wasn't sure whether this needs to go to cultural arts or over to leisure, so, I mean, yoga is kind of both, leisure, so I'm just looking for some guidance as to where we think we need to park these to have them fully discussed.
Well, I would say at this point, we send it to cultural arts first.
Okay.
And see what they say, if there's consensus to move this forward to cultural arts.
Okay.
All right, so if we can add this to cultural arts agenda, please, Steve?
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilman Hendrickson?
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor, I did have a prison liaison meeting, and one thing that did come up is several overdoses happening in Summers Prison there, and they're overwhelming the Summers ambulances, so I didn't know, we actually do a lot of that also, I didn't know if we can get a report from Chief Rigott if that is happening, that we are...
That is a much bigger issue that we are discussing in public safety, and Councilman Santinella, myself, Councilman Ludwig, it's big, and the state, I think, is, they have their own ambulances, and they're just, so we're working on it, it's pretty big. I don't think it's ready to come out yet, though. All righty? All set? All right, thanks, Bob. Anyone else seeing none? We're going to move on to unfinished business, there is none this evening, so we will move on to new business. 13A, the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Opposed? It's unanimous. And next is appointments, Town Council appointed, Enfield Cultural Arts Commission. I will say I reached out with, to the chairman of the Cultural Arts Commission, and she stands by every one of these. So number one, Enfield Cultural Arts Commission, the term of Emily Clifford L., Libertarian, expired 6/1/2025, reappointment would be until 6/1/2027.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
All in favor of closing nominations? And all in favor of Emily Clifford? It's unanimous, thank you, next. Number two, Enfield Cultural Arts and Commission, the term of office of Donna Hamery, Democrat, expired on 6/1/2025, reappointment would be till 6/1/2027.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, is there a motion to close nominations?
Close nominations.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? And all in favor of Donna Hamery? It is unanimous, welcome. Number three is the Fair Run Commission, the term of office of Walter LeBlu Jr., Republican, expires 6/30/2025, reappointment would be until 6/30/2027.
So moved.
Second.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? Okay, all in favor of Robert. It's unanimous. Walter, I'm sorry, Robert. Thank you. Next is the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency Alternate, the term of office of Robert Gillespie, Republican, expires on 6/30/2025, reappointment would be until 6/30/2029.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and...
Move to close nominations.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? Opposed, and all in favor of Robert Gillespie? It is unanimous. Welcome back, everyone. Next is a request to transfer funds for EMS billing fees, $12,500. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from EMS fund EMS revenue client fees, $12,500, to EMS fund EMS other professional services, $12,500. Date prepared, 6/6/2025, prepared by Chief Aaron Rigott.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made in second, and any comments?
No.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig? Whoops, sorry, Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
And Counselor Russo?
Four.
Seven members in favor, none against.
Thank you very much. And next, we're going to move on to a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement for architectural services for the pre-K through 5 elementary schools and Eagle Academy therapeutic day school pre-referendum project. Whereas the pre-K through 5 elementary schools and Eagle Academy therapeutic day school pre-referendum committee, as charged by the Enfield Town Council, has completed its review process for architectural services for renovations to the pre-K through 5 elementary schools and Eagle Academy therapeutic day school, and whereas the committee has recommended Tekton Architects. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council hereby accepts the recommendations of the committee, and be it further resolved that the council hereby authorizes the town manager to enter into and amend the agreement for the architectural services for the pre-K through 5 elementary schools and Eagle Academy therapeutic day school renovation project, which agreement and any amendments thereto are subject to review and approval of the town attorney. Date prepared, 6/12/2025, prepared by the town manager's office.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Bob said previously, Tekton Architects gave a presentation, really strong presentation, very experienced crew of architects, well-versed within Connecticut, Connecticut law, done some similar-sized projects within scope, and also the, what's the word I'm looking for here? Oh, sorry, worked with also Miss Padalese with pre-referendums that they've had successful outcomes with, so the other group that was there that did the presentation as well, they did awesome, I was very impressed with them, I mean, I think ultimately we would be okay with either-or, but Tekton Architects definitely stood out, and it received unanimous approval of the subcommittee, so it wasn't like it was a closed decision, it was unanimous approval, so we're all confident in moving forward with them, and I look forward with working with them and also the chairperson on the subcommittee.
Anyone, Councilman Crissati?
Yep, just one final thing that I just want to mention, as part of their presentation, Tekton gave us some information, and they actually already have these pre-done, and these are idea books that when they get to meet with the public, they have the opportunity to take a look at this, and then they also have this think, they call it a think tank, and pretty innovative, and really looking forward to working with this group. It's exciting.
Thank you, Bob. So all I want to say is, I think we did a phenomenal job putting the committee together, and I think it was one of the best moves I ever made, dragging Randy Dagel back in to chair it, because if you saw the emails behind the scenes where that man will not let this die for a day, and he pushes and pushes and pushes and gets it done, thus, that's why we're dealing with this tonight, I mean, this is, I don't know how many emails he sent to get it here so they can keep moving this forward, and if he keeps going the way he's going, I truly believe they will end up getting it on November's referendum. No pressure, Randy, but if not, we'll make an exception, and if I'm here, we can do some sort of special referendum for it. But to the committee and to Randy, I thank you very much for pushing this forward, I look forward to seeing the final plans, and let's get it to the voters. So with that, roll call, please.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Russo?
Four.
Seven members in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. Next is a resolution to accept donation of benches. Gil Vassar of Vassar Landscaping wishes to donate two benches to the town of Enfield. The benches are to be placed along the Town Farm Road bike path. Connecticut General Statute 7-148(c)(3)(a) permits the town to accept gifts of personal property for municipal purposes. There is no budget impact. The recommendation is that the Enfield Town Council approve the following resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council accepts the donation of two benches from Gil Vassar. Date prepared, 6/6/2025, prepared by the town manager's office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Now, on this one here, I did have a conversation with Mr. Vassar, and part of this was, they also asked that we do some sort of a, you know, port-a-potty along that, because it is a much longer route now, so with Donald Nunes and Chris, we agreed we're going to move the one from the dog park down just a little bit behind the sign going into the transfer station, so it is no more cost to the town, but it is accessible for the bike path. Also, and I know he didn't want to, but I've got to give a little bit of credit here to Little John of the Sign Factory, because I personally feel he is instrumental with Gil in making this donation happen, and I would like to ask that on each one of these benches, we just do a little plaque thanking them for their generosity when we install these benches, if you guys are okay with that.
Absolutely.
Good? Okay, seeing that, roll call, please.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
And Counselor Russo?
Four.
Seven members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next is a resolution accepting the Charter Revision Commission's final report. Next is a resolution accepting the charter revision commission's final report. Whereas the...
Move to waive the reading?
Sure. Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
All in favor of waiving the reading? So, are there any questions on this? The committee had their final meeting, and they stated the 5%, which is, that's what the council asked. So, at this point, roll call, please.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Russo?
Four.
Seven members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next is a request for transfer of funds to the town attorney's legal account, $60,000. Be it resolved... Do we have a water? Give me, can, do you need a water? Here.
No.
Oh, Steve's got one. I just went through the same thing myself. It's something in the air. It got my throat. All right. So, request for transfer of funds to the town attorney legal account, $60,000. Be it resolved that, in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from General Fund Town Attorney Judgment Settlements, $60,000, to General Fund Town Attorney Legal, $60,000. Date prepared 6/12/2025. Prepared by the town attorney's office.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Russo?
Four.
Seven members in favor, none against.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we're going to do items for discussion. Does anybody have anything this evening that they'd like to start? No? Okay. And any other business proper to come before said meeting? Seeing none? And public communication? Who would like to come up and speak to the council? Mr. Daigle? I don't know why you're still here. We gave you a job and...
Twice in one.
Yeah. Okay. You should be at work.
All right. I'd like to talk regarding the town attorneys. He mentioned about Deer Park in Massachusetts. I am fortunate enough to be president of the Shaker Pines Lake Association. We've been getting slammed for the last several years. When Stanley was approved for that lot up behind our lake, they clear-cutted some areas. There was a pond up there. They cut that. And they leased it to a farmer. And we had, two years ago, we had these major rainstorms, as you can remember. Well, our lake got flooded with the fertilizer, and it made our entire lake brown for almost a month. Not only that, it started growing vegetation that we've never had to the level that we currently have. We used to budget $7,000 a year, three treatments a year. We had to now budget $21,000 and five treatments, and we're not catching up. The town also allowed Mayfield to clear-cut all the land behind where they're going to be adding, where they're going to be adding luxury apartments. But instead of going through the procedure because they weren't allowed to do luxury apartments, they applied for a login and clear-cut application, which the town allowed them. And now, from this, they can go and put luxury apartments. Well, the town wetlands also approved them to, instead of having a 50- or 20-foot buffer that's required, they allowed them to clear-cut right up to our lake. So, beginning of last year, it rained again. They never, the town wetlands never even went there to verify before they started clear-cutting that there was a silk fence put up. All that water came down, all the wood chips came down into our lake. We had to do, again, ourselves hire to have that stuff cleaned out and provide more treatments. I notified DEP. I notified the town. The town came up and said, "Well, they were supposed to put a silk fence there." And I said, "Well, why wasn't it inspected before they started?" They, and she goes, "Well, I don't have enough staff to do that." So, they put a silk fence up using the material, wood chips of the trees they cut. And then, the next rainstorm, that ended up in our lake again. We're getting nailed from everywhere in this lake. They don't make lakefront property. They don't make lakes anymore. And this town of Enfield's been really poo-pooing this Shaker Pines Lake for a long time. We did get a grant from you guys to help with the spillway. But in actuality, by statute, the spillway is the town's responsibility to maintain that body of water. The lake is owned by the town as well as its, we pay taxes on it. We pay taxes to the town of Enfield for this lake. So, not only do we pay our taxes for our association to maintain it, we pay taxes to the town of Enfield. I finally got in touch with Don, the facility director, a little over a year ago because all the catch basins where the stormwater runs on our street goes into our lakes. Every one of those units don't have the protected cages on them. So, all the crap that goes in the street comes out and floats in our lake. They started doing cleaning of the sediment last year. That was never done for 15, 20 years. Now, we have this recycle park that's going to be going up in Deer Park. It literally touches our lake. Not only is the traffic a concern, which should have been a concern when Stanley started proposing to do this, but now, we have this, all this sediment and runoff that's going to be coming from this recycle, this construction recycle plant. I mean, when it rains, it's got to go somewhere, and it's kind of hit our lake. We need your help. We need your help dearly. We're getting nailed on three sides. This lake is costing us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that the towns, you know, the town should be helping with this. We have a spillway project going on right now. We're looking at probably anywhere from $100,000 to $75,000 for that. But that lake needs to be dredged. We're looking at, we had a pre-dredging survey done, and we're looking at anywhere from $250,000 to do just the north end, to $750,000, to $1 million to dredge the entire lake. You know, again, the town really needs to help us with this. We're getting nailed from Mayfield. We're getting nailed from when Stanley, which is now going to become Amazon. And we're getting nailed from Deer Park. We truly appreciate everything you've done. And we hope we can help you in any other way. We were trying to be there, but we weren't allowed to be there the other day. You said that they may be coming to a decision by the 10th. If there's any way we could be part of being there and help with the, you know, talking about it, how the effects it's coming on, we would be truly appreciative if we can be informed on it. Lori Parker is so involved in this. But if there's any way we can keep contact going, we would love to attend some of these public forums, if possible. So, again, thank you. I'm sorry.
It's unusual, but just very quickly. Again, the reason you weren't allowed was because of the rules that they have, but they didn't publish that. In fact, in the ad that they took out, they didn't say, "Oh, by the way, you have to register a week in advance." But they did hold people to that, unfortunately. But I will tell you, we are, we're all over this. And we're actively calling in a lot of favors from people that we know to try and find someone who's willing to, or a firm that's willing to do some pro bono work because towns go bankrupt on stuff like this. It's just, but it's so important that we're calling in a lot of favors. So, we're hopeful of being able to provide a lot of assistance to the people of Shaker Pines, but also, again, to the whole town of Enfield.
It's a town-wide problem.
Yeah. So, we're on it. And thank you for allowing me the courtesy to respond. Thanks. And we will, we will get in touch with you on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for everything you guys do. Thank you for supporting the pre-K project. It's going to be a long road, but we're definitely in the right direction. Thank you for everybody that attends on it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else seeing? None? Councilman Communications? Anyone? Seeing? None?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.